Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the fifth meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for the year 2001. The thought for today is that of William Shakespeare, who said, "To climb steep hills requires a slow pace at first." Madam Clerk.
With the Board's permission, I'd like to get a resolution first off. We need to amend Resolution Number 01-9 on January 8th of this year. We had an organizational meeting to set up the meeting times at 10:30. Now we're changing the meeting times to 10 o'clock. We need to make it official.
I think we need to make that retroactive, too, because our meeting last week was at 10.
Uh huh.
I'm still up for 9 o'clock if you guys are.
Would you settle for 10?
Okay, this is a good way to come to us. I'll settle for 10 today.
If we change it, just remember to let the media know in the public.
I'll so move.
One second.
Any discussion on that? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I would ask that we withdraw Number 078, the 911 employee, she resigned.
That's travel expense, madam.
Well, it was on the requisition.
No, it's under travel expense, item number seven, and I agree with you.
Oh, okay.
It's the green sheets.
Okay, I just had it marked in the wrong place.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved. We approve with the exception of 078.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on summary for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved.
Second, with, uh, I'll second, go ahead.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye, with the exception of number five.
No, I'm number five. Mr. Moore?
Which is, please, number five is?
I believe it was an employee from Golden Acres. As a matter of fact, I see her out here, I don't know if she wanted to make a statement.
Well, first of all, I'd like to ascertain what is the issue. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of the? Um, the issue is number five, it's a probationary removal of an employee from Golden Acres. I just, the Board want to address this situation.
When we make a motion, are we allowed to make an exception to that and vote? Basically, that's like voting individually in all of this, correct?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, it is, and we have done that in the past, because there are individual, um, thank you.
I read this today.
Does the Board want me to read this letter from Golden Acres?
Mr. Foote passed me that letter, it's from Mr. Golacki, concerning this matter.
Right, right. It does, I read it this morning.
I'm sorry, I didn't see this letter. I guess I've already moved on the motion, and Commissioner Vassie made an exception to number five, so I think that you need to call the motion for Commissioner Moore.
Was there a discussion, or was there a discussion?
No, she didn't, I don't think. Discussion?
No, that's what I'm asking, she was still reading.
Well, I would like to hear from the employee, being she's here, I think she has a right to speak.
And Commissioner Moore, what do you want to do?
What do?
No, no.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore, what do you want to do?
I just don't think this is...
I don't think this is an issue for public consumption.
I agree with that.
I'm not reading this letter from the Golden Acres Human Service Director Administrator, Golden Acres Administrator, I'm not going to enter that in the record. Personnel items of this nature are properly addressed in executive session, not in a public board meeting.
I agree with that.
I think it's unless the person requests to be heard in public.
I disagree with that.
Do you have a copy of the sunshine law?
I will defer to Mr. Flanagan, but we have procedure for hearing employees who have grievances, but it's my understanding that this person is a probationary removal, and therefore they are not considered an employee until they have completed their probationary period, therefore they are not entitled to the grievance procedure as it's outlined.
But I still believe that they have rights.
I'm not suggesting that she doesn't have rights.
I would really like to speak.
Well, I think that, I'm suggesting that this is not the proper place to address the issue. Commissioner Moore, you agree with me?
Well, I agree with that aspect of it, only because if we do this, I'm afraid that we'd have, I mean, we'd have probably every employee up here grieving, I mean, if that's, you gotta remember, I'm only here, this is my 30th day today, and if you guys are for the past 10 years, I want employees that are up for termination to speak, if that's been the past policy, but if I was in position, I would not allow that, but that's, I'm just saying, I don't know what the past has been, I don't know.
Mr. Flanagan?
I would like to know if this, because if not, we're setting a precedent to have everybody come up here that leaves and vent their anger publicly. As Mr., I mean, we talked last week regarding an exit interview to address these issues, if that is the case. That was what I was more concerned with, is getting the people's views in a written format, so that we can probably enter that into the record if we have to, or the personnel files.
Commissioner, I have, I sent, excuse me, I sent correspondence to the HR Director informing him to develop the procedure, which I understand he has, to make sure that employees were mailed a copy of our exit questionnaire, and to make sure that those were available for the Commissioners' consumption when they came back.
Okay. Now, I have spoke with this employee, and I have spoke with Mr. Foote, and I didn't know until this morning that it came up on the Personnel Action Summary, and now we're, I feel like we're about to get into an area that I'm not comfortable with, which is publicly discussing somebody's personnel issue.
So I believe the majority of the Board has agreed that they are not going to hear the issue at this point in time.
Is there another recourse for them to voice their concern?
Well, with all due respect, Commissioners, she will be allowed to voice her concern during the public comments section of this meeting, I mean, that's what it's there for. Obviously...
Then that's fine.
It'd be hard to restrict that.
No, that's fine, that's fine. You can't stop that.
Correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Blair?
I already voted once.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye, with the exception of number five.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number five. Authorized payment of $630.80 to Resource Tile Agency Incorporated as reimbursement for incorrect conveyance fee paid to the transfer office on the purchase of permanent parcel number 04-00-003-101-145. The purchase price was reported as being $217,675 with a conveyance fee of $870.80, when the actual purchase price was $60,000 with the correct conveyance fee of $240.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approved entry into subdivider agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Lorraine Land Limited for the Eaton Commerce Park subdivision, Eaton Township, Rich Bear and Developer. The estimated cost of construction is $314,580, and inspection fees in the amount of $6,420. The county engineer will inspect the improvements as installed and invoice the subdivider for the said inspections. Subdivider shall pay the entire cost and expense of said improvement. Developer has provided an escrow agreement in the sum of $321,000 deposited with Fifth Third Bank of Cleveland, Ohio. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval. Mr. Mallett is here for any questions.
Does the Board have any questions regarding this item?
I have not.
If not, I'll so move.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve an entry into the following contracts with Lorraine County Job and Family Services. These are purchase of service contracts for Kendall's Care for Kids of Oberlin, Ohio to purchase publicly funded childcare services effective February 18th, 2001, expiring February 17th, 2002, and for today's child of Lorraine, Ohio to also purchase publicly funded childcare services. This is retroactive to June 30th, 2000, expiring June 29th, 2001.
Is there someone here to address these issues from?
Peggy Thorpe is here.
Excuse me?
Peggy Thorpe.
Where is Peggy Thorpe? Peggy, I just have a question, why is today's child retroactive to June 30th?
My name is Peggy Thorpe.
Can you pull the microphone up a little bit?
My name is Peggy Thorpe, T-H-O-R-P-E. Today's child has been doing business, or had a contract with Job and Family Services for several years. In June, or in January of 2000, they had a change of ownership. With the change of ownership, they are issued a new license. The license is for a six-month period, which would be through June of 2000. Due to a clerical error, we were basing their contract period on the old dates, which would be a one-year period, and which would have ended later in June, or, I'm sorry, sometime in February of 2001. So what we really needed to do was to, in order to cover their services for that time period, was to backdate to their new license date, which was June 27th, I believe, of 2000.
When was this error discovered?
In November, actually, and it's taken this long to get program data and information from the provider in order to renew their contract. They have been providing the services all along, so actually, this is just to remedy a clerical error.
Thank you.
Peggy, have they been being paid without the contract?
Yes, they have.
I'll so move for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need authorize the Budget Department to solicit interest rate quotations from various banks for the sale of the $138,000 special assessment water and sewer improvement note issued 2001 series.
Mr. Rokasie, could you just tell us what project this is, please?
Good morning, John Rokasie, the Commissioners' Budget Director, R-O-K-A-S-Y. Commissioner, the projects are the Murray Ridge Waterline, the Leary Avenue Waterline, Antrim Road Sewer, and the West Road Melody Lane Sewer Projects.
Murray Ridge, Leary Avenue, Antrim, and what was the last one, please?
West Road, Melody, Melody Lane.
Thank you. I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve an entry into the following contracts with Lorraine County Job and Family Services. These are purchase of service contracts for Kendall's Care for Kids of Oberlin, Ohio to purchase publicly funded childcare services effective February 18th, 2001, expiring February 17th, 2002, and for today's child of Lorraine, Ohio to also purchase publicly funded childcare services. This is retroactive to June 30th, 2000, expiring June 29th, 2001.
Is there someone here to address these issues from?
Peggy Thorpe is here.
Excuse me?
Peggy Thorpe.
Where is Peggy Thorpe? Peggy, I just have a question, why is today's child retroactive to June 30th?
My name is Peggy Thorpe.
Can you pull the microphone up a little bit?
My name is Peggy Thorpe, T-H-O-R-P-E. Today's child has been doing business, or had a contract with Job and Family Services for several years. In June, or in January of 2000, they had a change of ownership. With the change of ownership, they are issued a new license. The license is for a six-month period, which would be through June of 2000. Due to a clerical error, we were basing their contract period on the old dates, which would be a one-year period, and which would have ended later in June, or, I'm sorry, sometime in February of 2001. So what we really needed to do was to, in order to cover their services for that time period, was to backdate to their new license date, which was June 27th, I believe, of 2000.
When was this error discovered?
In November, actually, and it's taken this long to get program data and information from the provider in order to renew their contract. They have been providing the services all along, so actually, this is just to remedy a clerical error.
Thank you.
Peggy, have they been being paid without the contract?
Yes, they have.
I'll so move for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need authorize the Budget Department to solicit interest rate quotations from various banks for the sale of the $138,000 special assessment water and sewer improvement note issued 2001 series.
Mr. Rokasie, could you just tell us what project this is, please?
Good morning, John Rokasie, the Commissioners' Budget Director, R-O-K-A-S-Y. Commissioner, the projects are the Murray Ridge Waterline, the Leary Avenue Waterline, Antrim Road Sewer, and the West Road Melody Lane Sewer Projects.
Murray Ridge, Leary Avenue, Antrim, and what was the last one, please?
West Road, Melody, Melody Lane.
Thank you. I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need authorize the local emergency planning district to apply for $71,000 to the State Emergency Response Commission for the county hazmat program. Mr. Kelly is here.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, please.
Good morning, Tom Kelly, Emergency Management Director, K-E-L-L-E-Y. I'm here to ask the Board today to apply for up to $71,000 from the State Emergency Response Commission, which is part of the Ohio EPA. As you're probably aware, the county, every county in the state of Ohio is required to have hazardous material reporting and community right-to-know program. The EMA, our office in Lorraine County, was given this task about 14 years ago, and what that requires is that we develop a countywide approach to respond to a chemical emergency, provide public education, along with proportion requirements that companies in Lorraine County that use, manufacturers store these chemicals have to report it to us, the jurisdiction fire department, and the state of Ohio. Currently, right now, we track over 700 facilities on a daily basis that use or store manufactured chemicals in Lorraine County. I'm pretty proud to say that we were the first in the state to develop some of these programs under the requirements. Some of the things we've done with this grant, we've, there are currently four county hazmat teams, Lorraine, Leary, Avon, Lake, and there's a countywide team. We purchased four laptop computers about four years ago. The entire database of those 700 facilities is in those laptops, so if there's an emergency response, and that fire department responds to that soon, they can immediately pull up a facility, find out what they have, what the consequences are of that release, and also determine the total numbers of the key employees that need to come to the business. We also were the first in Ohio to develop a compliance officer program. We actually go out to the businesses and assist the companies with the required paperwork that they have to fill out every year. This also assures our accuracy at what's in a facility, if we respond. It also gives us an opportunity, opportunity to interact with the people in the business and do the facility in case something does happen. The law also allows a cost recovery program. What this does is, if there's a spill in Lorraine County, we can bill a spiller for the costs incurred by the emergency responder. We've been doing this now for about 11 years. We're also the first in the county, in the state to do that, and over 11 or 12 years of the program's been in place, we've returned over half a million dollars to the jurisdictions in the county that have responded to those emergencies, so it offsets their costs when we went there. And last, but not least, is Wally, the wise guy, Commissioner Moore, probably not familiar with Wally, but we purchased a costume character program about a year and a half ago that goes out to schools in the area and teaches children about not to touch mom and dad's bleach and things in the house, and it also works on severe weather information and that. Last year, Wally and Caroline, who oversees that program, visited over 5,000 kids in Lorraine County, so the program works real well. Some of the other things we were able to do with the grant was we brought nationally-known speakers in to speak about the emergency responses. The Sioux City airplane crash in 1989, the World Trade Center bombing, the Oklahoma City Borough Federal Building, and then last year, we had Sheriff Stone from Columbine who came in and spoke about their problems that they had in response. If you notice that, the listing in the agenda says it's $71,000, that's the pie in the sky amount. Unfortunately, some of the counties don't do as much work as we do, but everyone pays into a big pot and it's divvied up amongst the counties. We traditionally get about $25,000 or $26,000, so I think we get a pretty good bank with the buck if we do get back, so that's what we're here requesting, which passes, basically, and apply for the money.
Tom, what's the money used for?
It offsets our costs for the program, all that work we do, and does pay some of Caroline's salary and some of parents, who also does the database information coordination that goes back in the general fund.
Other questions?
No, but I do have one request. Tom, I'd like for you to get with Roxanne and possibly set something up on the agenda with our hazardous pollution program, the education program that you've got in the schools. I think, being that we're televised now, it might be good to put this program on for the public, you know, when I, possibly, and if this is okay with my colleagues, possibly if our agenda is light at one time or another, that we could put this program on for the public.
We're always looking for someone to wear the Wally costume to, by the way, so. I'm lucky, I have to be under six foot, so I'm lucky.
Well, what the program is, is like, at the one time when we had the Aztec explosion over there, people didn't know what to do. They ran outside and, right away, their curiosity brought them to the site, which they should have did something in the reverse, like, close the windows, close the doors, seal everything up, stay in your house.
And that's what we're trying to do with the education, is to replace sheltering versus going and running outside, or going to mom and dad's house to get away. It's sometimes safer to go in your house instead.
I think the public needs to be aware of this, too, if we can do that for their benefit.
Glad to.
Good suggestion. Any other comments?
Thank you, Tom.
If not, I'll so move.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve an entry into the following contracts with Lorraine County Job and Family Services. These are purchase of service contracts for Kendall's Care for Kids of Oberlin, Ohio to purchase publicly funded childcare services effective February 18th, 2001, expiring February 17th, 2002, and for today's child of Lorraine, Ohio to also purchase publicly funded childcare services. This is retroactive to June 30th, 2000, expiring June 29th, 2001.
Is there someone here to address these issues from?
Peggy Thorpe is here.
Excuse me?
Peggy Thorpe.
Where is Peggy Thorpe? Peggy, I just have a question, why is today's child retroactive to June 30th?
My name is Peggy Thorpe.
Can you pull the microphone up a little bit?
My name is Peggy Thorpe, T-H-O-R-P-E. Today's child has been doing business, or had a contract with Job and Family Services for several years. In June, or in January of 2000, they had a change of ownership. With the change of ownership, they are issued a new license. The license is for a six-month period, which would be through June of 2000. Due to a clerical error, we were basing their contract period on the old dates, which would be a one-year period, and which would have ended later in June, or, I'm sorry, sometime in February of 2001. So what we really needed to do was to, in order to cover their services for that time period, was to backdate to their new license date, which was June 27th, I believe, of 2000.
When was this error discovered?
In November, actually, and it's taken this long to get program data and information from the provider in order to renew their contract. They have been providing the services all along, so actually, this is just to remedy a clerical error.
Thank you.
Peggy, have they been being paid without the contract?
Yes, they have.
I'll so move for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need authorize the Budget Department to solicit interest rate quotations from various banks for the sale of the $138,000 special assessment water and sewer improvement note issued 2001 series.
Mr. Rokasie, could you just tell us what project this is, please?
Good morning, John Rokasie, the Commissioners' Budget Director, R-O-K-A-S-Y. Commissioner, the projects are the Murray Ridge Waterline, the Leary Avenue Waterline, Antrim Road Sewer, and the West Road Melody Lane Sewer Projects.
Murray Ridge, Leary Avenue, Antrim, and what was the last one, please?
West Road, Melody, Melody Lane.
Thank you. I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the payment of $56,905.22 local match to the senior citizens' T federal fund for salary and benefits for their director Patricia Littleton for calendar year 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need authorize the Lorraine County Sheriff to apply for a grant to the Bureau of Justice to participate in the fiscal year 2001 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program. This program allows states and units of local government to receive up to 50 percent of the cost of bullet-resistant vests. Based upon the current labor agreement with the Deputies Union, the bullet-resistant vests are to be purchased for all members of the bargaining unit whose duties necessitate the use of such vests. This program will defray the cost of new vests purchased up to 50 percent. The Sheriff's Department would like to purchase five vests at $500 each, and this program will reimburse the county $250 for each vest purchased.[681.81]
The World Trade Center bombing, Oklahoma City, Mar-a-Federal Building. And then last year we had Sheriff Stone from Columbine who came in and spoke about their problems that they had to respond to. If you notice that the listing in the agenda says it's $71,000, that's the pie in the sky amount. Unfortunately, some of the counties don't do as much work as we do, but everyone pays into a big pot and it's divvied up amongst the counties. We traditionally get about $25,000 or $26,000, so I think we get a pretty good bank with the butt of both of you to pack. So that's what we're here requesting which passes and we're basically applying for the money.
Tom, what's the money used for?
It offsets our costs for the program, all that work we do. It does pay some of Caroline's salary and some of parents who also does the database information coordination that goes back in the general fund.
Other questions?
No, but I do have one request. Tom, I'd like for you to get with Roxanne and possibly set something up on the agenda with our hazardous pollution program, the education program that you've got in the schools. I think being that we're televised now, it might be good to put this program on for the public, you know, when I possibly, and if this is okay with my colleagues, possibly if our agenda is light at one time or another, that we could put this program on for the public.
We're always looking for someone to wear the Waldo costume to, by the way. I'm lucky, I have to be under six foot, so I'm lucky.
Well, what the program is, is like, at the one time when we had the Aztec explosion over there, people didn't know what to do. They ran outside and right away their curiosity brought them to the site, which they should have did something in the reverse, like close the windows, close the doors, seal everything up, stay in your house.
And that's what we're trying to do with the education of the public, is to replace sheltering versus going and running outside or going to mom and dad's house to get away. It's sometimes safer to go in their house instead.
I think the public needs to be aware of this too, if we can do that for their benefit.
Glad to.
Good suggestion. Any other comments?
Thank you, Tom.
If not, also move.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Mrs. Blair? Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, item number 17 is to authorize appointments to the Lorraine County Transit Board, but before we do that, I have a proclamation that I would like to read. And this proclamation is to Bill Bowdler, who has advised the board by letter that he is withdrawing his name from list of potential appointments to the Lorraine County Transit Board. It says, "In the matter of expressing our appreciation to William Bowdler for his support and involvement with the Lorraine County Transit Board, whereas William Bowdler is departing as a member of the Lorraine County Transit Board, and whereas Bill served on the Lorraine County Transit Board since February 19, 1998, served as chairperson during 2000, and also served on the Lorraine County Transit Bylaws Committee and Personnel Committee, and whereas Bill has given unselfishly of his time in promoting Lorraine County as a whole for transportation development and providing services to the citizens of Lorraine County, and whereas Bill Bowdler has demonstrated a high degree of dedication and concern for all facets of the Lorraine County Transit Program. Now therefore it be resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, we hereby express our appreciation to Bill Bowdler for his dedicated service to the Lorraine County Transit Board and public transportation in Lorraine County." Bill, if you'd come forward to the microphone, and perhaps you'd like to say something, but I would like to present this to you on behalf of the board.
I would just like to thank the Commissioners for the opportunity to serve on this board. It certainly has been a wonderful experience for me, and although some circumstances have arisen that will no longer allow me to do that, I will certainly continue to support Lorraine County Transit and things they're doing. And I think that the Lorraine County public at large should keep an eye on Lorraine County Transit, because I think there's a lot of wonderful things that are going to be happening there. And I know that the new members of the board that you'll be appointing today certainly will have the ability and the desire to carry out those things, and I certainly wish them all the luck in the world, and thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Clerk, because of the diversity of this board and the way it was created, we have three slots to fill, Mr. Bowdler's slot, and then two alternates. Two of those individuals must be Republican or Independent, and one of those must be a Democrat or Independent. Commissioner Ross has two names, excuse me.
Oh, man. I'm all excited, I finally get two Republican picks, and you do that to me?
And not only that, Commissioner Moore's father is here this morning, and my face is really red. I'm sorry, old habits die hard. When you say something for four years, you have to say something. I call my children by their wrong names too, if you would forgive me.
I'll forgive you.
I thought I was doing such a good job. Anyway, Commissioner Moore has two names to offer, and Commissioner Vassie has one name to offer, so I will turn it over to you.
Oh, after that?
Do I have to go to my room now?
By the way, my understanding is, I talked to Dick regarding this, and I believe the reason why we have an alternate available is because the alternate that was there moved up to a board member, and I believe our resolution's gonna have to, also I have Pat Tokar who moved up as a board member, but we need to pass that as a resolution also. So Pat Tokar, the reason why I have an alternate available is they moved up. So I guess to do this is to say that there's a motion for Pat Tokar, who was an alternate, needs to be appointed to the board, and then Al Taylor will replace Dick Bowdler on the board, and then I believe it's Harry James will be reporting, or will be the alternate. Harry M. James II will be the alternate. If you wish to look over the, I don't have a problem with that. That's how my part is, I think you.
Yes, I just handed mine to the clerk.
Do you want to read this name?
Yes.
If I can pronounce. Eliseyol Sengis?
Close enough.
Eli Sengis.
Sure.
As the alternate.
Right, right.
All right, so that brings us to a full board then?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. I'll let it. I'll figure it out.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Comments, reports, Mr. Cordez?
I have nothing today, thank you.
Okay, is this the county prosecutor, Mr. Glenn?
No reports this morning.
President's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I have a couple items. After last Thursday's board meeting, an anonymous telephone call was made to a local newspaper informing them that Robin Jones, who was named 911 Director last week, is related to me. I want to publicly state that Robin Jones and I are in no way related, either by blood or marriage, or any combination thereof. And additionally, Rebecca Jones, who was hired today to work in community development, is not a relative of mine either. I think that's so important. Number two, as Chair of the Investment Advisory Committee, which met last Monday, I would like to report that the year 2000 set an all-time record high for general fund investment income earned at $7.8 million. County Treasurer Dan Tellerick is to be commended for this record. Number three, I attended the annual meeting of the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce yesterday. I heard four speakers from Engelhard Corporation, Ross Environmental, Melba Manufacturing, and Avon Oak Skilled Nursing Facility and Childcare give accountings of how the Chamber has assisted their particular business in the past year. The full annual report is available for review by anyone who might be interested. And finally, number four, I thought I saw Rebecca Gray come in.
She just left.
She just left. Well, I was going to invite Rebecca to give you this news, but since she didn't, I will. I would invite anyone who is interested to attend the 9:00 AM meeting tomorrow of the Lorraine County Community Alliance, which will be here in the public hearing room. The program includes a presentation by Jim Cookingham, who is President of the Northeast Ohio Software Association, together with a presentation by Brian Bonham, Ohio State University/Lorraine County Extension Agent, Economic Development, who will outline his role in the college's Glide Program, which stands for Great Lakes Incubator or Digital Enterprises. The Alliance will also welcome new members in the seat of Lorraine, Bold, and Lorraine National Bank. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners' report.
I have nothing.
I have some. Okay, it's been a month since I took office, and I'd like to say a few things here. I've met quite a few county employees who really care, and they do a great service for the citizens of this county, and I've been well received, and I really appreciate that. This past couple of weeks, I've had the pleasure of meeting our auditor, our treasurer, and our budget director, and I feel that the county's finances are in good hands with Mark, Dan, and John. But I did put one question to each of these men, and the question was, how are we going to pay for the Justice Center? Well, guess what, folks? The Justice Center has been going on for three years at a cost of over $1.7 million, and I think yesterday Virgil sent me another report, I have about $1.8. And I got the same answer from all three men, which is, nobody has asked these men if Lorraine County can afford a $12 million, or an $18 million, a $25 million, a $50 million, and now my sources are telling me, a $58 million Justice Center. So it is my understanding that the plan, which these three gentlemen have not yet participated in, will max out our county's ability to borrow in the future. Now, without the ability to borrow in the future, the county will not be able to invest in our schools, streets, and sewers. This project as it stands today will handcuff us for the next 15 years. Now, the process right now is out of control. The original need for the Justice Center was our courts, our judges, and our prosecutors. Now, we need this Justice Center, but we do not need a monument to bureaucratic spending. And what I propose today is this, so I don't want to slow down the construction of the Justice Center. What I'm calling for is these executive sessions on Tuesdays, I'd like to replace that with a public meeting to see how much can we afford, and what are we willing to borrow to build this Justice Center? Now, what I'd like to do is invite the auditor and his team to this meeting, the treasurer and his team, the budget director and his team, our bond counsel, so that they can participate, Virgil, the capital improvement manager, our architects, and our construction manager, Tuesday morning at 9:00. I'd like to have Jim Cordez set up this meeting, so that somebody can explain publicly how we can afford to build this center with the recession looming over our heads right now. And that's all, that was my report. So I would like to have a public meeting on Tuesday instead of an executive session on Tuesday, because this is the biggest project we have in this county, and it's time to move and know how much is this gonna cost us, and how are we going to pay? Because I have yet to get that answer.
Well, I agree with you, and this is why I've been saying, you know, that half that money over the past few years should have been put in reserve, and we could have from our budget, we could have reserved it. But we've got other problems too, because our local government funds are being cut. The governor is cutting the local government funds, we've got other expenses, and I don't have the list with me, but I asked John and Jim to go over some other expenses that we have, and I think they came up to like, almost $11 million if we do all these other projects that are in, that have been talked about, and I'm really concerned about it. And like you said, the economy's downhill, I'm very concerned.
All I'm asking is that we get the experts all in one room here today, or on Tuesday. Give us some time, give the Commissioners time to draw up some questions, get us some information before a public meeting, and let's bottom line it, and get started with this discussion. If we can complete this, I'd like to see it completed on Tuesday. If we can get the right answers that I can be comfortable with, then that would be fine. Do you have a problem with that, or?
I just may make a suggestion that we may have a problem getting bond counsel and architects here on such short notice, but this Tuesday coming up, would it be acceptable to?
Well, then we can get new architects and new bond counsel. I mean, there's a lot of money being made off this project. I don't, there has not been one shovel dug over there across the street, yet $1.8 million has been paid to the architects. I think for that price, they should be able to show up on a Tuesday.
I will make that message understood.
I'm just letting you know, that's how I feel. I don't know how you guys feel, but there's a lot of money that they've made already.
No offense, but I don't want to frighten the people that are concerned about the schools and the streets. I think our roads come from our gas tax money, motor vehicle tax money.
No general fund.
No general fund. And the schools are, they have their own, they're deducted from the taxes in another way, so it doesn't affect the general fund. So I don't want anybody to panic in these areas. Now, the sewers, those are, that's another issue, because a lot of those are assessed. So, you know, although the general fund bonds these sewer issues, I think John can explain it better than I can, but I don't think you have to panic as far as those three issues are concerned with the general fund. But there are other issues that we should be panicking over.
Well, I just want a public meeting regarding how we're gonna pay for it, that's all I'm asking for.
I agree with you.
I think that's a good suggestion. I think a couple of weeks ago, I asked the administrator when it was convenient to set up a meeting with the architects, perhaps not to focus in on this aspect of it, but on other aspects of it, and that has yet to occur because of other items that we've been working on. But I do believe that we, while the people that you talked to might not have been conversant on the cap, and our ability to borrow money to that extent, I believe that there has been discussion internally about that issue. Am I correct, Mr. Cordez?
Yes, there has been discussion on our ability to generate up to $50,000, uh, $50 million in needed revenue and funds, excuse me, for paying for the Justice Center. Although it's great to owe merit for handcuffing the county for quite a few years, depending on how much further that goes, present plans was to, you know, real quick was to bond out about $33 million. We have $10 million in cash, and then to take $5 million out of the bond retirement fund, including the money we've already paid, and that will pretty much cover presently what the Justice Center, that leaves us with no borrowing capability, because the $33 million would exhaust all of our borrowing capability as far as bonding goes, and with a downturn in revenues, our bonding capacity would actually decrease, so we wouldn't be looking at picking up anymore over time over the next few years, because our revenues would be decreasing.
But there are some things that will become, will be reducing.
Well, one of them would be the, would be the Amherst Sewer Project.
Correct.
Would pick up about $3 million in bonding capacity there. But for a county this size, I gotta be honest with you, Commissioner, $3 million is not a lot of borrowing capacity, in case the county has to step forward and do some big projects. And I know that the funding issue is, has been debated endlessly, but it will be a little bit pushed, especially if the project gets past where it is now, or we have any cost overruns, we're gonna have a hard time coming up with, I believe, coming up with a lot of the needed capital without sacrificing other projects. As you know, we have the airport issue, we have the train intermodal issue, those are two big projects that we're probably gonna have to offer some assistance on. We have a mountain of requests from different jurisdictions that you've probably been privy to for financial assistance around the county. The jail tax levy is gonna cross over next year, we're gonna have to fuse them with some new general fund money, probably about $1.5, $2 million a year, and they're looking at possibly doing some expansion out there. I understand from the sheriff that within a year or two, we're gonna have to look at expanding the jail again. So these are all projects that are gonna be coming to the forefront within the next year or two, and I am, you know, previously worried like you are with the local dollar share, not just on the, on the census, but I think if you read your information this morning, if you had a chance, we got something from the state that says that the state is now freezing local government dollars at last year's levels. It's not gonna be a percentage of the state revenue anymore, and that's gonna cut us, and they're looking to fund 25% of this new education initiative on the backs of local government. That's gonna take money out of our dollars, starting, I believe it's August of this year, and that freezes in there for two years, and that's gonna cost us, how many dollars? I don't know. I gave a copy of that memo to Mr. Robes, he just expressed right before the meeting, and I wanted to discuss it with him, look at what the ramifications from that are. So we do have fiscal issues, and I'm sorry to go on in length here, but we probably do need to take a serious look at this.
Yeah, we were warned about that last year, about local government funds being reduced. We're looking at probably about $3 million in Lorraine County, $190 million throughout the state.
We were worried about it based on census, and we were all definitely gonna get.
No, local government funds being cut at the state.
Oh, well, the freeze, on the, on the tax.
But I'd be willing to share the information that I received from John, and all the other expenses that we have too.
That's what I'd like, basically, if you could come to the meeting with the list of what you just said, what are, what are our anticipated projects that were out there? Because I want to feel comfortable that we can move ahead in this county and not stop with just the Justice Center. So what you just said, if you could document all the projects that you think that might affect our budget in the future, that might help us with the decision on whether or not we continue with the Justice Center at its cost? Do we spend more money, or do we spend less money? Or do we stay where it's at? And really, I need your, I need everyone's help to, to come up with this. This is not a three Commissioner issue, I think this is a county issue with all the employees to come together and say, okay, what can we afford, and what are we willing to spend? And what do we have in the future? And really, we need, probably, since, I need your help to put that together.
I understand.
I have that list, but I think we can add some things to it too, John.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
So, the board is meeting at 9:00 next Tuesday, and it's not going to be an executive session, it's going to be a work session.
A public work session.
A public work session regarding finances for the Justice Center, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Could I make this comment, just a reminder that 10:00 that same day is a solid waste, a solid waste meeting in this room.
Could you schedule that?
I don't believe that that's a solid waste advisory committee?
The policy committee?
They meant last week.
They're me again, that's what I talked to them.
Well, I am a member of that committee, and I've not received any notice. Mrs. Vassie, what are you saying?
Commissioner Blair?
Maybe they can meet in the conference.
You, you may not have received a notice, because you issued a letter pointing me as your alternate, and I have the letter to attend the meeting.
Well, I think that they should also send a letter to the person who's on the committee. Excuse me, then, can they meet in the back?
I can check, I'm not sure how many people are involved with the committee.
I think that there's a room in the back.
They can meet.
I guess we're pulling rank.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll, I'll deal with Mr. Bellman on that issue after the meeting.
So that's 11:00 on Tuesday?
No, 9:00.
9:00 on Tuesday?
I'm working on this 9:00, folks, so.
We noticed.
Any other Commissioners' report?
Do you have anything else?
No, I think that's enough for one day.
I think so too. That was good.
Old business?
Um, old business.
Ending issues?
Four.
First item, a ward contract with demolition of 215 and 219 Court Street, Larry, Ohio.
Now, is this what we tabled last week? Is this the issue?
Yes, it is, and my understanding was that there was going to be some checking into this to see if the one bidder had paid their taxes.
Commissioners, we, there was, there was an issue there where a local vendor was in arrears on some taxes, and therefore it was felt that the bid should be awarded to another vendor that wasn't a, a local vendor. We wanted to investigate this issue further, and we tabled that, and it is my understanding since last week that these matters have been corrected and the arrears have been, have been paid. So you have the option of at least considering awarding that contract to, to a local vendor, I believe it's Bender, or you can go with the non-local vendor.
No, the issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But the issue, just for background purposes, Bender was the low bidder by $2,298, according to my arithmetic.
That's correct, Commissioner.
But he also owed $18,000 in taxes that was filed from the treasurer's office?
I'm not sure the exact amount, but I understand it was substantial, and that that was paid this week.
Who will verify that?
Well, I got a letter here that it was paid. Was it $8,000?
I think it was.
I said there was a whole bunch of them, but at the time of the bid though, isn't the, I thought the statute said at the time of the bid, they had to be, taxes had to be paid, is there a, is that how that works?
There it is.
There's a whole bunch.
Here's a copy of the.
Right there, $18,960.
$5,000.
I mean, do you think that, since the time of the bid, he didn't pay his taxes, and he was passed due, and or he was delinquent?
Well, I talked with, I believe.
I'll ask Mr. Flanagan for a answer.
Was the owner though, but there is a reason why he didn't, and I think that you should know that too.
No, I just want to ask him a question.
My understanding is long been county policy that a bid requirement is no real estate or personal property taxes owed when the bid is submitted, and the vendors sign an affidavit attesting to that. In this particular case, there was a disclosure of taxes owed when the bid was submitted. The information on the affidavit was incorrect, more taxes were actually owed than what was disclosed, and I issued a legal opinion to Mr. Monteen indicating that the low bidder did not comply with bid requirements because the taxes were owed. And I did discuss with Mr. Monteen that if the low bidder who had an incorrect bid was given an opportunity after the bids were submitted to make his bid totally correct, that that might not be fair to all the other bidders who had all their bids correct when they were submitted, and there could be a potential for future legal issues with regard to the second lowest bidder.
That's what I'm concerned with, is that at the time of the bid, you had four people that bid, is my understanding, two local and two out of the county. And the lowest bidder was a local individual that didn't comply with the original bid, which is, well, I'm glad to hear that at least he signed that he didn't owe the tax, or he did owe some taxes. It just doesn't seem like it's fair for the other three gentlemen who paid their taxes to not get the, to not get a chance. I'm just, that's, I'm just saying, that's just my personal opinion.
I don't know how many bidders there, there were, or.
I looked at four.
Or non-local, I was just giving the two lowest bids to look at, and that's what I indicated to Mr. Monteen.
Commissioner Vassie, did you have comments that you wanted to make?
Yes, I talked with, I believe it was the owner yesterday, Dennis Bender, and he gave me the reasons, or some of the reasons why those taxes hadn't been paid, and it's because some of our major industries that they've worked with, and, I mean, the steel mill we know was holding Bender's payments back. And I believe personally that by giving them this bid, it would assist this company and keep, and help to keep them in business in Lorraine County, and I think this is something that they need to get them over the hump, and I'm willing to give Bender the bid. I think our companies need to be assisted, and we can't just keep our thumbs down on them and force them out of business, not of the county. We have to help them in any way we can. And since this is a local company, was the lowest bid in the county, they did pay those taxes up for whatever reasons they had, and it's my understanding that the steel mill wasn't the only one, but there was other companies that were holding their money back, so it made it hard for Bender to pay their bills. And to me, that's logical in business, you need to, that money has to come in before you can pay your bills. And if the county can help by awarding this bid to this company, I'm willing to do it.
I'm all for keeping money in Lorraine County. My concern is, you have Gregory Trucking, who's also a bidder, who's also a Lorraine County businessman with 20 jobs in Lorraine County. I would rather favor somebody like that who pays their taxes.
Well, Bender's been doing a lot of jobs in the county too, I think I saw a list, and there was certainly more than 20 on there.
No, no, I'm just saying employees, but, I mean, he was within 5% of the bid, but I think that's an issue that probably has to come up at another meeting, is how we're going to be awarding bids. So do we have to, I mean, I don't want to drag this thing on, do we, is there a motion, or are we going to wait?
There hasn't been a motion.
Yeah, I guess I would like to ask Mr. Flanagan to repeat his legal, his verbal legal opinion to us this morning. I read your letter, but I wasn't sure, did you say that the information that was submitted with the bid of Bender Trucking was incorrect?
Yes, more taxes were owed than what was disclosed on the affidavit, and there was some language on the affidavit, I forget the exact wording, but as the delinquent tax collection process goes, a taxpayer receives notification from the treasurer that the taxes are delinquent, and then that can result ultimately in a tax delinquency lawsuit. The affidavit spoke to that type of process of a, like, certified delinquency or a lawsuit in process. I don't believe with these taxes in question, the process had got to that point. So the affidavit was answered truthfully, but given ambiguous wording, there was not a disclosure of all taxes that were owed.
I would like to move to table this and ask the prosecutor to re-review the whole documentation and make a recommendation to us.
I don't have a problem with that, I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Okay, and mutual word bid to natural paper and packaging of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount of $81,746.38 for the purchase of copy paper.
I believe the purchasing director has asked that while some of the bid items are in question for the, the supplying of other items, that they are in need of the copy paper, and this was the low bid for the copy paper. So I would move that this item be approved as outlined.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yes. What are we doing with the other, I understand that there, the toilet tissue and the other paper goods that we were purchasing, wasn't it two? paper goods that we were purchasing, wasn't it two different bids?
Yes, it was two separate bids, one for a copy paper and one for toilet tissue and trash liners.
And trash liners, okay. Uh, now that one, I believe, was questioned because it was a local bidder, Moke sales bid on that was three hundred and eighty-two dollars more than the other bidder, but they're a local company.
Correct.
Is there any reason why that's not on the agenda?
I'm not sure.
I kept it off the agenda, Commissioner, because I'm still reviewing the matter as far as, uh, the technical ability for us to award that bid locally, and I am working with purchasing and with the prosecutor's office to develop a local purchase preference policy for some of our bids. I hope to be able to present that to the board next week.
Okay, then the question comes up, like, they pay within fifteen days and then there's interest or something, National Paper had that on there.
Right.
Now, what about Moke Sales? Because that three hundred and eighty-two dollars could be saved in the interest that we would be saving.
It, it, I agree with you, and, and those are issues I was looking at. Um, I'm not quite sure that we've ever been billed and charged interest, though, when the county pays late.
From National?
From National. And, and, and I got to be honest with you, um, we can't pay a bill in ten or fifteen days.
Correct.
Impossible.
But yet that's on the bid, that if ten days net or fifteen days net.
Yes.
And so much interest after.
Right, but nobody's ever charged us interest because they realize that public jurisdictions at best usually takes four to six weeks to get a, through the process and get a check out of here. Uh, and I, I met with National Paper this week and I looked over some information that they, they had provided for us. Our, our normal payment schedule with them was thirty-eight days, and, and they had not charged us any interest on, on those, uh, on that, uh, on those payments. And, so, I mean, I'm looking at all those issues. I think in combination with developing a local preference, uh, uh, policy, and, and I'll have a recommendation concerning Mokes for you next week, uh, between Mokes and National, uh, I want to make sure that we don't violate the spirit of, or the essences of any laws that are out there, but this could just be a very good time for us to develop a policy and then use that in the future if we can't do it this time, I'm not saying it.
But I think, I think if you look at it, we can, because there's also other issues, like National Paper has delivery in twelve days, Mokes has it in two days, these are all things that must be in that bid. And when we look at the bids, we look at lowest and best, okay, so.
I understand, Commissioner.
You know, we have to take all this in consideration.
I, uh, I will look at every dotted I and every crossed T, trying to find the reason. I just do not wish to place this into any jeopardy with, with, you know, scurrying or supplanting a requirement of the revised code.
Okay.
I'll have something next week, Mrs.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore? Aye.
Okay, um, any business?
I would just like to ask, is the board going to reschedule the executive session from next Tuesday, or are we going to wait another week?
I think we're going to wait another week.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Commissioner Vacy?
I think so.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, any other business? Uh, will you comment?
We have exactly five minutes before, um, public, no, I'm sorry, oh, we have till eleven fifteen, good. Anyone from the, uh, public who would like to comment, uh, speak to the board? Come to the microphone, please.
My name is Ann Friedel. I worked at Golden Acres, uh, nursing home for about nine weeks, um, and I had big concerns while I worked there. Um, there were, there was no time to take breaks and lunches, um, and I had gone to see a couple commissioners to let them know that there just wasn't any time, uh, the employees were working without breaks and lunches. Um, and then, uh, they didn't have enough people working, I was a dietary aide in the kitchen, even to get the job done by the period of time you were supposed to get it done. Um, well, so though, at, at that point, I was ruffling everybody's feathers, you know, uh, you know, everybody needs a break, and if you don't take a break or a lunch, uh, you're going to start having injuries. Also, on top of that, um, I was shorted on my pay, um, not a lot, just, you know, two hours, but I had to file a grievance to get this pay, um, so now they're really upset with me, um, on it. Um, and also, like, during the time I was there, uh, six dietary aides had come in, and all six of them quit, and everybody said the same comment, this is too much work for one person to do. Not to mention that, um, through the process of it, um, the boss didn't train anybody properly. It was, uh, I, I worked at a restaurant for years and, and it was so unprofessional, um, I, it was just unbelievable. Um, and pretty much that's what I, the administrator also knew, um, that, uh, these people weren't taking breaks and lunches. The comment from the actual, my actual boss, uh, when they pulled me out the one day, she said, "No, they don't take breaks and lunches, because if they're not getting their job done quick enough, that's their problem." So I, I expected to be fired, it's not a big deal, but I think you have a big problem over there, um, and I think you need to go over and check it out. I'm a Lorain County taxpayer, and you know, when we go out and get a job in Lorain County, we expect it to be a good job. This was a horrible job, but I really think you should check it out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ann. Is there anyone else, uh, from the Shirley Johnson?
I think you need a little levity at this moment. If you'll turn to page five of your correspondence at the end of your agenda, line eight begins, "Many homeowners have taken steps toward resolving the noise problem by insulting walls, installing new windows, and so on." And if that method is recommended, perhaps a full volunteer committee could be chosen to go around the county performing this service, and I'll certainly volunteer for some locations.
Thank you, Sherroy.
I like that.
Other comments from the public?
Um, I'm a Bender employee. I'd just like to offer a little insight into.
Would you, uh, give us your name, please, sir?
Dave Thacker.
Dave, again?
Dave Thacker.
Thank you.
Um, I'm all for the money to stay in Lorain County, whether it be with Gregory Trucking or Bender Construction. Um, I'm not for out-of-town companies, you know, getting, being awarded bids in our, in our county. It's, uh, it's, everything's tight enough as it is with, uh, the bids and contracts as close as they are, and I'd actually like to offer a little insight. With, uh, US Steel, they have owed Bender money for over eighteen months, and it's quite a substantial amount of money. Uh, we just recently finished, uh, Thirty-Sixth and Pearl Street Bridge for the county. Uh, we have done the demolition of, uh, the two buildings over on Court Street, we did them, I'd say about a year ago, for the county. I would just let you know that we now presently employ about thirty-five people who are all Lorain County residents. At one time, when we were working in US Steel, we employed at, at least two hundred and thirty at times. Uh, what was signed on the affidavit, I can't be of any, any help there. At the time the affidavit was signed, we were owed money from the county, uh, at that time. I mean, I just would like you guys to know all that, and hopefully somehow we can resolve this, and we'd like to do the job for you. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thacker. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board? We have, uh, eleven fifteen public hearing. Um, I will move to board correspondence, I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I've skipped over the news media again, is there anyone from the news media that wants to, uh, comment or ask questions? If not, we'll stand in recess until eleven fifteen. Um, a eleven, the board is back in session for a eleven fifteen public hearing, Mantle Rock Estate, Brownhelm Township, detention basin maintenance cost developer Roland Angersbaugh. Lorain County engineer by letter dated November twenty-ninth, two thousand, indicating that the developer has requested two detention basins and rock outlets, and the subject subdivision be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with the high revised code section six one three one point six three. All maintenance items are within the subdivision boundaries only. The construction cost of the two detention basins and rock outlets is a lump sum of seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars. Each sublot benefiting from the drainage items shall pay their prorated share by acreage, which amounts to five percent of the total construction cost. The five percent of seventy-three thousand five hundred is three thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars per year, which will be paid by sublots one through thirty-four, excluding numbers eighteen and thirty-four. The property owners would pay five percent per year until they reach twenty percent. This money would stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and place on the annual report. If approved, assessment will be put on the two thousand and one tax duplicate collectible for year, calendar year two thousand. Resolution number zero zero nine nine two adopted December fourteenth, two thousand, scheduled this public hearing. Mr. Angersbaugh was forwarded a notice of this hearing by certified mail on January twelfth, two thousand and one, and notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on January sixth, two thousand and one. Uh, since this is a public hearing, we will take comment from anyone in the audience, either having a question or a comment or a statement, but I would like to ask you, before you make comment, anybody who wishes to speak, that you would stand and be sworn in by the assistant prosecutor, which is normal when we have a public hearing. Um, my, um, notes tell me that I should ask the developer if you have any comments that he'd like to make, Mr. Angersbaugh, uh, do you have any comments? If you'd come to the microphone, please.
Good morning, thank you. Uh, really don't have any particular comments, we have sixty-seven acres in Brownhelm Township that we're placing this, uh, thirty-four home development on, and the, uh, as was stated there, we do have two detention basins, and, uh, of course, we worked with the engineers and with county engineers to, uh, construct this, and I had requested the commissioners sometime back, uh, that they put this on perpetual maintenance, and that was forwarded to the county engineer, so we had been working with them continually through, uh, the time of construction, and we hope that this will be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Angersbaugh, does the board have any questions for Mr. Angersbaugh?
I don't know if my questions would go to him or the engineer, but the five percent, which is a three thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, how many years will this be?
And, my understanding is until enough tax from the sale of the lots, the individual homeowners reaches the amount required to, uh, for the maintenance.
Um, the item that I read said the property owners, uh, would pay five percent per year until they reach twenty percent. Mr. Carney, you're next on the line to, uh, offer comments anyway, so would you come to the microphone and perhaps you can answer that question for Commissioner Vacy?
What is that, uh, twenty percent of, is, of what, of the seventy-three thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, then, is that going to be enough?
Yes.
To maintain that property for forever, or does this, uh?
Maintaining the retention basins.
Well, I mean, the basin, whatever it is.
Yes.
That will be sufficient?
Yes.
Because after that, it's going to stop, right?
Oh, it's, in the accounts, we'll draw upon that accounts forever. We draw upon that. If there's needed, uh, cleaning, uh, minor, uh, slippage, uh, that's where that comes from.
That twenty percent, you're saying, we're going to draw on it, all right? I think that's a.
It's reserved for a particular, those two retention basins, and only for those two, for the benefit of these individuals that are contributing to it. It's, it's an excellent plan, uh, tickled the bet to do it.
But I'm just.
We could use another couple hundred more of these retention basins, if you recall, the comprehensive land use plan's second priority.
Okay, so you figure that that twenty percent of the seventy-three thousand dollars is going to be enough to, to maintain this, uh, forever?
That's correct.
Wow. Okay, and, and then why is the two sublots excluded, eighteen and thirty-four?
That's where the retentions are, right?
Yes, come over to the microphone, please, Mr. Angersbaugh.
Right. That is a different drainage area, these particular two, uh, do not go into the basins, so they would not be assessed.
That's all I had, thank you.
Mr. Carney, did you have any further comment to make about this issue?
As a prime example of what should be done, you're going to see the same responses between Avon and Ridgeville soon. Uh, this is an opportunity, when a subdivision is built, we have retention basins, we require those in our review, uh, we've even gone to the extent of requiring them for large commercializations. Uh, it reduces the flow of the water as if nothing was built, goes back to where it was forced, so there's really zero future impact, because we retain that water for a reduced flow, equal as if it didn't exist. I perpetuate these forever, it's the greatest thing in the world, we've got a preliminary plan, excuse me, preliminary study, it shows, I think, sixteen retention facilities planned in Lorain County. Uh, some municipalities have already jumped on those, Amherst and Ridgeville has accomplished at least three to four of those. Uh, I recommend this highly, if you recall my last statement with the comprehensive land use plan review board, there was two priorities established through that group, and one was an update of the sanitary facility plan countywide, which you have yesterday, and the proposal you requested. And the second priority, I believe, was the completing the flood control management Lorain Countywide facility plan, which is what we're really referring to, is a combination of piping, ditch cleaning, and retention basins. So this is a plan example of a quality job, I'm looking forward to doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Um, are there any township trustees present who would like to make a statement? And, uh, then are there any property owners who have comments or questions, or would like to make a statement? I see no bodies moving forward. Um, and I guess that there being no further public comment to come before the board at this time, I would conclude the public hearing, and I would, uh, ask the prosecutor, I believe it's, uh, are we supposed to act on this today?
Yeah.
Okay. Does the board have any questions, um, on the.
No, it's just my understanding that that detention basin actually prevents flooding. Correct? Good thing.
Um, that being the case, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Our next hearing is, uh, eleven thirty, we're a couple minutes off, so I think we should just, uh, hang around, so that we'll be, uh, appropriate.
While we have a moment, Commissioners, um, next week, uh, the Amherst annexation is scheduled for hearing, um, we're probably not going to have a, a final response from Lorain by then. Um, the last time that came up, we kind of, uh, just went ahead and continued it with the consent of the, the parties. If it's all right with the Commissioners, I will contact Attorney Marcia Colette, uh, and ask her if she wants to go ahead with the hearing, or if they want to just go ahead and continue it, and if that's the case, we. And if that's the case, we can get some word out to the public ahead of time so that everybody doesn't come down here for an unnecessary hearing.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. Do you have a date that you are looking towards?
I'm thinking we probably better go a month.
Which would be about what?
We'll have to, we'll have to open the hearing and set a new date, but just rather than have everybody, even their attorneys, come down and have that expense, I think we can, out of courtesy, again, now, we'll have to have their consent. If they say they want to have it, then we'll have it.
Did you want to continue it to the first meeting in March? Is that what you're thinking of?
I would think at least a month. Maybe even mid-March might be, no?
The first is open.
What is that date?
Oh, okay.
Thursday, March 1st.
Is March 1st?
Okay.
Would you see if that date was agreeable? Yeah. I would like to be here for that. Let's move it to the first if we can, and if we're not concluded by that time, then we can extend it again, if that's okay. Is that all right with the rest of the board?
When are you leaving, Betty? Can we do it on the 8th? Maybe give us another link.
No, I won't be here.
So when are you leaving?
After the meeting on the first.
Oh, okay.
I have my bags packed, and I'm leaving from here. So we set it for 11 o'clock again? 11:15? 11:15. Sorry.
11:15?
That's right.
March 1st, 11:15.
Okay. Just stuff that we did today.
Please let Martin get out of here.
Huh? You've got an ally here.
See, if you really want to go to Florida, let's start at night.
I need to go today. All right, we need to move to our 11:30 public hearing.
We need a gavel to start.
Yeah, I should have brought the public hearing for the proposed cleaning of the Burge Ditch in Wellington Township. Tim Abraham, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, and Alice Burge, Group Manager of the Lorain Soil and Water Conservation District, submitted a letter dated August 7, 2000. They indicated that a cleaning of the Burge Ditch located near the intersections of Jones, excuse me, intersection of Jones and Holly Road in Wellington Township has been completed through a group agreement project through the Lorain Soil and Water Conservation District. Total cost was $14,400 and was paid through the County Master Drainage Plan. Mr. Abraham has requested this ditch project be placed on permanent county maintenance at an assessment rate of $3 per acre benefited for lots of 10 acres or more, or $30 for lots less than 10 acres. Seven property owners would be affected by the annual maintenance assessment. If approved, assessments will be put on the 2001 tax duplicate collectible for the calendar year 2002. Again, by resolution dated December 14, 2000, number 00993, this public hearing was scheduled. Notice was published in the Chronicle-Telegram on January 6, 2001, and letters were forwarded to property owners on January 12, 2001 by certified mail. At this time, I would ask anyone who wishes to comment or make a statement or ask a question to be sworn in by our Assistant Prosecutor. If you just please stand and...
Anybody thinks they might have a comment? Anything to say? Do you swear? That the testimony you shall give today shall be the truth and you shall answer unto God or under penalty of law perjury?
Thank you. The first person I would like to call in is the County Engineer. You want to defer?
I'm going to defer this to him.
He's deferring to Wayne Milletti, Assistant County Engineer.
Wayne Milletti, County Engineer's Office, M.I.L.E.T.I. John Hamilton, our office handled this ditch. We have made up an assessment table for each owner that benefits from this ditch, and that'll go to the auditors once it's approved by the Commissioners. They'll be assessed that money every year for maintenance. There'll be perpetual maintenance fees that'll be under taxes every year. Understand the ditch is all said and done and completed, and I can yield the saltwater for the actual work that was done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Milletti. Bob Turnus Jr. from the Saltwater Conservation District.
As you know, last year, the county commissioners appropriated a half million dollars to ditch cleaning. The Saltwater District, in working with the County Engineer's Office, developed a plan whereby we agreed to do group projects for people that were willing to sign permanent maintenance agreements. And this is one of those group agreements that's come forward. This is actually the first project that we did complete with the funds. We're glad to see it's made its way to the maintenance assessment stage. It is the board's policy that we will require, or at least ask, the parties to agree to permanent maintenance so we don't have to readdress these problems 20 or 30 years from now. This project is done once with county funds, and the landowners will be contributing towards the permanent maintenance. If you wanted to know any more details about this particular project, one of our other supervisors who lives right in that area, Neil Barely, is also here. So I guess if you had any questions particular to that exact project, I'd give it to him.
Thank you, Bob. Does the board have any questions on that? I'd just like to commend the Soil and Water Conservation District Board and the County Engineer, and apparently Alice Burge, who worked to put this project together. I think it's a start, and it's something that you've long wanted to do, and so it's a beginning.
Madam Chair, include the seven property owners too, because I think this is a great achievement and an assurance that those ditches will be kept clean, and that's very important.
You're absolutely correct. Thank you. Are there any township trustees here who would like to make comment, or any other property owner who would like to comment either for or against this project? Seeing no takers, I declare this public hearing to be closed, and I will move that this be approved as outlined for assessment.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Bassey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you for your attendance, and I think we're on, and I was really sincere in my comments to especially the Soil and Water Conservation District Board because I've been privy to some of the information about their meetings that they've had, and I just want, these guys are really paid a lot to serve in this capacity, and I really, really want to thank you for all your services. We have an 11:45 scheduled with the presentation from the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County. Is Mike Connaught here now? Not here yet? Okay, well, he's got seven minutes if he's prompt. We'll just recess until 11:45 then.
Appreciate it.
Just delighted. We're going to convene because Mr. Connaught is here now, if I pronounced your name correctly, from the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County. So if you'd like to come forward to the microphone to make your presentation, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mike Connaught, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come in here today, tell you a little bit about the Boys and Girls Club and the direction that we think our organization is heading. I'd like to introduce our President of our, the Board of Boys and Girls Club, is Mr. George Abram, and he'd like to come up and say a few words, if possible.
First of all, good morning, and as Mike indicated, my name is George Abram, President of the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County, and where I'm located in Oberlin, which is the same city in which I live, and have been living there since 1962. What I wanted to just briefly say this morning is we appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present the information Mike's going to present in a few moments, but I first just wanted to preface it with a couple of items. One is that we are not in a position, and we are sorry for that, to give definitive information on costs associated with maybe repairing the building at Green Acres, which is the issue before us. We, of course, that takes time to do because we want to research the cost, not only for capital improvements, but for the general upkeep of the building should regain occupancy of the building. So we haven't had the time to do that. So what you hear from Mike will not be the definitive cost associated with those two issues, because we won't be looking into that, and we assume that we will be having further discussions between our board and the Commissioners. So with that, I'd like to say thanks again, and if you see me get up and creep out of here, it's because I have to be in Cleveland by 1 o'clock, and I'm driving a Ford Thunderbird, not a helicopter. Thank you.
We wouldn't want you to get in trouble with any law enforcement agency on the way.
Again, thanks for inviting us here today, and I'm going to just give a little brief overview about the Boys and Girls Club and how we got started and what direction we're heading in and so forth. The Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County is interested in occupying the Green Acres facility at Oberlin for a dollar a year. Our organization was chartered by Boys and Girls Clubs of America on December 31 of 1998. The Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County opened our doors in March of 1999. As a new youth organization, the club is providing outstanding programs, services for children of Lorain County. Guided by the Boys and Girls Club America standards, our organization has maintained a national membership and accreditation. Boys and Girls Club America tradition to service the nation's youth is a 137-year legacy. Boys and Girls Club Movement is a nationwide affiliation of local autonomous organizations that work collectively to support families and children of all backgrounds. Our primary goal is to assist members in developing skills and qualities to become responsible citizens of our community. Boys and Girls Club Board of Governors estimates that 3 million young people are served through the Boys and Girls Club Movement. Currently, there's 19 Boys and Girls Clubs in the state of Ohio, and I don't have the exact number of members that are involved in the program at the state level. The Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County is currently serving 350 youth between ages of six and 18 years of age. Our fundamental focus is our five core program areas of character and leadership development, education and career development, health and life skills, the arts, and social recreation. Kids that are participating in our program at the Boys and Girls Club right now are a combination of kids from different areas and different communities. Majority of our kids that are participating in the program are based in Oberlin, but we're also doing a program with Fireland School District two days a week where we bus kids in from the Fireland School system and are taking advantage of the Boys and Girls Club right now. We also have seen kids from Wellington and Elyria participating in our membership, in our programs, so our base is growing. Our organization works in, forward to collaborating with the county by offering services to students. Our after-school programs will provide children an affordable opportunity to participate in quality educational, recreational, and special event programs throughout the year for an annual membership fee of $5 a year. As the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club, I look forward to working with the community at large. It's the ultimate goal of the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County, will be established and recognized as one of the best youth-serving agencies in the county. Through commitment and creativity and optimism, we will map our direction and pathway into helping youngsters develop potential as being responsible, caring citizens of our community. Currently, we're in the process of contacting other agencies that might be willing or looking at opportunities of collaborating with us in potential site at Green Acres. We've had initial talks with, we're in the same building as Lorain County Academy, which is an alternative school, and they're kind of expanding their programs, and we've had some initial talks with them as a possibility of another agency going out there. There are some local Oberlin-based agencies that might have an interest in participating and collaborating with us. Also, Lakata is interested in possibly talking to Tom Stubber about the possibility of utilizing, you know, potential site for programming. And as an organization currently, we're doing programs with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and then we have collaborative programming going on with Oberlin College. So we're expanding our services. On the document that I gave you, it shows our organization's various funding sources, and I kind of wanted to bring that to the forefront to let you know how we're getting our funds currently. And some of our funding sources include our annual fund campaign. We've had support from Lorain County Prosecutor's Office, the Nord Corporate Foundation, the Nord Family Foundation, Helen Steiner Rice Foundation, Lorain Metropolitan Housing Authority, where we're doing a teen employment, teen employment program currently at the Boys and Girls Club, where we have five youngsters participating in the program. We had just recently received funding from Lorain County Workforce Investment Board, where we're going to do a similar type teen employment program at our facility, which will employ eight teenagers in our community. We have support from the Community Foundation of Lorain County, Oberlin Exchange and Rotary Club, Lorain County Area Realtors, the State of Ohio, Boys and Girls Clubs of America, and we have the Ohio Alliance of Boys and Girls Clubs that's doing some lobbying, lobbying for us at the state level. We have support from Outback Steakhouse, Cleveland Cavaliers, and the Cleveland Browns Foundation. So we're starting to develop a base of good support, and I think we're heading in the right direction as far as our funding sources go. The document that I sent you yesterday, and I hope you have a copy of it, but it does show a list of our Board of Directors and the different current occupations that they have right now. So if you don't have that, I can get you a copy of this letter that lists our Board of Directors. Just as an ending, I'd just like to thank you for the possibility of considering the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County. I think we're doing good things in the county. I think our numbers are growing. We're up to like 350 kids, and now these programs that we've established as far as with Fireland and the potential of Elyria children and Wellington and other areas taking advantage of our program is out there. And, okay, yeah, I'd also like to recognize Jean Charard, who was, who brought the idea, brought the idea of a Boys and Girls Club to Lorain County.
I think Jean should come forward so that she can be on television. You've done an awful lot of work.
Yeah.
Well, don't smile real wide then, Jean.
I'd really like to. As a, as a new organization, we're, we're heading in the right direction, I think, and I think a lot of it's in regards to Jean and her thoughts and vision on a Boys and Girls Club in Lorain County. And my experience has been Boys and Girls Club. It's a new challenge for me to bring this to our county, and I'm looking forward to continuing to provide those services to the kids of the county. But I'm going to turn it over to Jean and let her say a couple words.
All I'm going to say is thank you so much. Thank you for talking to us. Thank you for continuing to talk to us because this has been years and years and years. It's growing. It's healthy. The kids are safe. Later, he drove me back, back down to Orville when I said, you know, there's something down there you should see for our county. I think it would make a big difference. It's made a huge difference. Our team, he's going to get up and say something, and I just think it's wonderful, and thank you so much for just listening to us.
Thank you, Jean.
And thank you on my behalf, and thank you for taking the time out of your schedules to listen to us. And I'd like to introduce Chief Mormon, because Chief Mormon and I have been talking a lot lately, too, and his, his vision, too, is meeting the needs of the kids in the community. As soon as he was appointed Police Chief, in the first place, he stopped with the Boys and Girls Club, because he sees the benefits that Boys and Girls Club has to offer communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Morning, I'm Mike Foreman, Chief of Police for the City of Oberlin. I'm just here to support the Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County. They are located in my city, but they do benefit kids not only in Oberlin but Firelands and Elyria. It's been really great since they've come there. I wish we had them 30 years ago. We've seen a dramatic decrease in the number of kids hanging out. We've seen a dramatic decrease in the number of kids hanging out from when school lets out until dinnertime. It's been good for, a place for the kids to go. They can do their homework. They have tutors there. They can practice on computers, and they can even work on anything they want to, arts and crafts, recreation, so. Any questions for Mike or myself?
Thank you, Chief. Does the board have any questions or comments?
As usual, I do.
As usual, I do. Mike, we talked about you talking with a transit in regards to getting a bus, maybe?
Yes. I haven't really had any initial contacts with Deborah yet, but I'd like to...
I did yesterday, and I told them that I'm really supportive of this, and is there any way we could have one stop there? And she supported that idea. My concern was the flag stopping, which was what they do where if you're on the street, the bus will pick you up. I wanted an actual stop. And their future with the transit system is Oberlin, and they were going to consider the Boys and Girls Club, but I think it's the... And we have to see... We have to wait for a prosecutor to deal with it.
That's good.
Attorney General first, so...
That is good.
Yeah, but we were talking about...
And I need to follow up on your other... No, we follow up the whole county, not just Oberlin. My concern is this has to benefit the whole county, and that's why I was pursuing Deborah more.
If this is an after-school function, many of these children are delivered home via a school bus, not the Lorain County Transit. So maybe that's something that ought to be looked into also.
We were talking about possibly getting one of their discarded buses.
Oh, really?
For them.
Oh, okay.
I'll follow up on that.
I appreciate that. And Jean, I want to thank you for your persistence, because I remember when you came into the office with another lady several years back, and you didn't give up. Good for you. Yeah. Yes.
The one thing is in regards to transportation and my experience at Boys and Girls Club, the parents know there's a safe facility for their kids to participate in, and they'll bring them to the club to take advantage of the programs. And the transportation part is something that we'd like to really look at.
That's okay for people who can bring their children, but there are people who don't have transportation who are working.
Right.
So I think we need to look at that aspect of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
And this is for everybody throughout the county. It's not just for Oberlin.
Right.
Anybody within the county is welcome. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation this morning. Any other comments? If not, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Burge.